Good evening. Good to see everybody here this evening. Let's kick it off if we can please call the roll.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Present.
Councilmember Hartman? Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Here.
We have a quorum there.
All right.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yeah, let's do this. There we go. We're all here. We have a quorum there.
No pressure. You've got 10 seconds.
No problem. Sorry. All right. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Excellent. I'd like to personally thank Councilmember Kozinski for bringing forward this next item. Really appreciate it, especially in the world we live in and the things going on. This is important. And David, thank you for doing this. If you'd like to proceed with the next item.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for showing up. I was supposed to read this in the last meeting, but I happen to be out of town, so let me just go on with this. We'll go back two weeks. Whereas, the month of May, it says this month, I'm going to insert the month of May, we celebrate the enduring heritage of Jewish Americans whose values, culture, and contributions have shaped our character as a nation. For generations, the story of the Jewish people, one of resilience, faith, and hope in the face of adversity, prejudice, and persecution, has been woven into the fabric of our nation's story. It has driven us forward in our ongoing march for justice, equality, and freedom, as we commit to upholding the principles of our nation's founding and realizing the promise of America for all Americans. And whereas, for centuries, Jewish refugees fleeing oppression and discrimination abroad have sailed to our shores in search of sanctuary. Early on, they fought for religious freedom, helping define one of the bedrock principles upon which America was built. Union soldiers celebrated Passover in the midst of the Civil War. Jewish suffragists fought to expand freedom and justice. And Jewish faith leaders linked arms with giants of the civil rights movement to demand equal rights for all. And whereas, Jewish Americans continue to enrich every part of American life as educators and entrepreneurs, athletes and artists, scientists and entertainers, public officials and activists, labor and community leaders, diplomats and military service members, public health heroes, and more. And whereas, there is also a dark side to the celebrated history of the Jewish people, a history marked by genocide, pogrom, and persecution, with a thorough line that continues in the record of antisemitism today. We have witnessed violent attacks on synagogues, bricks thrown through windows of Jewish businesses, swastikas defacing cars and cemeteries, Jewish students harassed on college campuses, and Jews wearing religious attire beaten and shot in the streets, shot on streets. Antisemitic conspiracy theories are rampant online, and celebrities are spouting antisemitic hate. And whereas, these acts are unconscionable and despicable, they carry with them terrifying echoes of the worst chapters in human history. Not only are they a strike against Jews, but they are also a threat to other minority communities and a stain on the soul of our nation. Antisemitic incidents remind us that hate never truly goes away. It only hides until it is given just a little oxygen. It is our obligation to ensure that hate can have no safe harbor in America and to protect the sacred ideals enshrined in our Constitution, religious freedom, equality, dignity, and respect. That is the promise of America. And whereas, the town will not remain silent in the face of this antisemitic venom, virtual and violence. And whereas, the federal government is developing the first national strategy to counter antisemitism that outlines comprehensive actions, the federal government will undertake and that reflect input from over 1,000 Jewish community stakeholders, faith and civil rights leaders, state and local officials, and more. This strategy will help combat antisemitism online and offline, including in schools and on campuses, improve security to prevent antisemitic incidents and attacks, and build cross-community solidarity against antisemitism and other forms of hate. And whereas, governance alone cannot root out antisemitism and hate, all Americans, including businesses, including business and community leaders, educators, students, athletes, entertainers, and influencers, must help confront bigotry in all its forms. We must each do our part to put an end to antisemitism and hatred and create a culture of respect in our workplaces, schools, and homes, and across social media. And whereas, this Jewish Heritage Month, let us join hands across faiths, races, and backgrounds to make clear that evil hate and antisemitism will not prevail. Let us honor the timeless values, contributions, and culture of Jewish Americans who carry our nation forward each and every day. And let us re-dedicate ourselves to the sacred work of creating a more inclusive tomorrow, protecting the diversity that defines who we are as a town and as a nation, and preserving the dignity of every human being here, at home, and around the world. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Town Council of Southwest Ranches the month proclaimed, May 2023, as Jewish American Heritage Month. We call upon all Americans to learn more about the heritage and contributions of Jewish Americans and to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies. It's dated this 8th June, the 8th day of June 2023.
Very good. Thank you, David. Fantastic.
Thanks.
Yep. All right. Next item on our agenda is public comment. We have some public comment this evening.
Yes, Mayor, we have four speakers, starting with Jim Lasky being our first and Noel Hollingsworth being the second speaker. It looks like we have a fifth speaker.
Thank you. Jim?
On this pollution matter, the first bit of research I did was with the Florida Game Commission. They have lots of biologists, and they constantly have been monitoring mercury levels and sulfur levels in the animals throughout the whole entire state of Florida. So as far as credibility of experts, you know, that's a good place to start. And before the meeting tonight, of course, I happened to run into Mary McPhee, and she's willing to get Weston on board. Then I believe that we could go up and down the western side of the state of Florida and get everybody involved, because they're all hunters and fishermen. They eat this stuff now. They're not going to want more of it. And the way this mercury works is the farther up the food chain you go, with the biggest stone crabs, the biggest lobsters, and the biggest tuna fish, the mercury multiplies, and I forget what the scientific name for it is, but it just gets added on, so it actually increases. So the crap coming out of the incinerator gets magnified. And that's something we all got to take in consideration. I don't know if there's any studies on that. I'm sure they get ocean-going fish and inspect them in some places, but don't forget, there's a lot of economics involved here. If we make it too public, it's very bad for business, very bad. Billions and billions of dollars when you think about it. I mean, you know what the Chinese do. They're right now, they're fishing off the end of Cuba down there, catching everything they can put in the boat, and then they go to the Keys and buy all the shellfish they can buy, and they buy it live and ship it live back to China. And, you know, if you want to go buy jumbo stone crabs, even if you've got the money, you're hard-pressed to find them. Anyway, so much for that.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Noel?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Just to touch on the incinerator thing, there's been a whole lot of discussion since the last vote, of the last meeting, as to whether or not the Town Council has been a little bit abrupt in going forward with this. And if what I've heard is true, then the Town Council definitely needs to reconsider at this meeting, but I'll let someone else that has more information on that talk about that. What I want to talk about is Orphan Project. And several of you have seen the article that I gave from the Miami Herald of June 2005. And I'll read a couple of things to it, which means that this council has already approved it. Metropolitan Planning Organization has already approved it back in 2005, and it's been waiting for funding to be put together. So, "The town plans to convert two lanes of Sterling Road Bridge over I-75 to accommodate more pedestrian and equestrian traffic. Town has approved the plan, but it awaits money to pay for it. Number two, the Metropolitan Planning Organization's approval of the project six months ago," that means it was either in December or January of 2004 or '05. "Southwest Ranches agreed to seek funding to make sure the costs stay low. Southwest Ranches doesn't have the funds to maintain it. Ultimately, the MPO agreed to assume that liability." So, it has already been approved by the Town Council. MPO's already approved it. And I think that it got messed up a little bit at that point, because someone wasn't contacted, and they got upset with it and killed it. I think the town should go back on this, because it's already been approved by MPO, already been approved by our Town Council, and we ought to go forward with it and see what we can do with it. See if we can get those two lanes for equestrian over the bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Mayor, the next speaker would be Richard Ramcharatar, followed by Debbie Green and John Stephen Garotti after that.
Good evening. My name is Richard Ramcharatar, Southwest 166th Avenue. I would like to start off by saying that we know that the Town Council Administration, our town attorney, has our best interests at heart when it comes to this ILA. And we hope that you may consider renegotiating the terms of this agreement that would make it favorable to us and also other municipalities. I just have a short statement that I would like to read to you, and that is, if this ILA truly has no plans for an incinerator of any sort, then amend the signed agreements and change the language in the new ones to be signed, so that they forbid the use of any technologies that are not aligned with the zero-waste hierarchy. And if you want to get more information about that, you can go to www.ZWIA.org/zwh, and that prohibits incineration. Or you can just explicitly ban incineration and related waste-to-energy and waste-to-fuel schemes like pyrolysis, gasification, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Debbie?
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 199th. First, I'm going to just have a real quick speak on behalf of the Country Estates Homeowners' Association, the Civic Association, in regards to the ILA that was signed, and then also in regards to the potential waste-to-energy incinerator out in town, or not in town, but right next to town. So, it was a very big discussion at our last meeting. And at the meeting, the Country Estates HOA Civic Association made a resolution to bring to the Town Council of Southwest Ranches that the country, just so that it's known, that the Country Estates Homeowners' Association is opposed to having an incinerator located in any area near or adjacent to the town of Southwest Ranches, as it will have negative effect on our health, property, and lifestyle. And this, the motion passed unanimously. I know several of you were at the meeting, so you heard, you know that it's vehemently, now I'm speaking myself, it was vehemently opposed to having anything like that out, you know, out west or in the area where it's been talked about being, seeing as how it's sitting right in a, it's a residential area. Basically, the town of Southwest Ranch is a residential and agricultural area, other than a very minute bit of business. But that's what our town is made up of. And this type of waste-to-energy incinerator, it just brings just an astronomically greater risk of something going wrong than a landfill or other options. And it's just, we're all on wells. We have all the farm animals, the cows, and all of that. And then, just logistically, just reminding everyone, I know you all know, but just reminding everyone, that Griffin Road is two lanes each way up until Bonaventure, and then it becomes one lane each way. And that's just another, logistically, it doesn't work without hindering residents out there tremendously. I also wanted to, I think this issue, I know you, I guess it will come up later, more often maybe, for discussion, so that you all can speak about it. But I think this issue is just of such importance, and it affects our whole town, that maybe this warrants a single-purpose advisory board or working group within the town, kind of like what you had for some other issues, where you have residents from throughout the town to create up a board, just so, in gathering the information. Because you don't want to put all, you know, all the fear-mongering stuff out there. We want to make sure we have the facts and the science and the, all of that to back up the facts and science as to why it doesn't belong here. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can I make one more comment?
No, no, Jim, you cannot.
Send an email.
Mayor, we have, the next speaker is John Stephen Garotti, followed by the final speaker, Mary Ann Allen.
Thank you.
Good evening, guys, ladies. David, by the way, that was a great speech on the Jewish, I think it's Jewish Appreciation Month. This town's always been very inclusive of many religions, so that's a nice representation. On my block, on 162nd, and a little bit out west, we have a lot of the Sikhs and the different, I think Hindus, so that's a nice thing, and it's important, because that brings people together.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. It happens. I do that sometimes. What was I going to say? Regarding the incinerator, that could be the biggest disaster the town of Southwest Ranches has ever had. I think that has to be treated like some sort of a nuclear bomb threat. Honestly, I know it sounds dramatic, but let me tell you why. If we don't get Weston, Miramar, everybody up and down, what do we have? Think about it. The Everglades, everybody that's happy with the bird, I mean, anybody that you can get their attention? I'll do it. Tell me whatever I got to do. I'm here for that, because you can't replace Southwest Ranches. That's not something I can do or none of us here can do, but that's the two points I wanted to make tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mary Ann?
Thank you. It is so nice to see our residents fired up. And really, the first few words I want to say on, for YouTube, for people to tune in, we are in the fight of our lives, people. The reason we came out here was fresh air, good clean water, a place for our kids to breathe, easy. I don't want to see a future where our children are wearing masks and using inhalators because they can't breathe, and this is what's happening to people that live around incinerators. So, to the audience that never shows up, look, where are you? We are in the biggest fight of our lives. This council needs every resident to be behind this, because it's going to affect all of you. So I know you've been on your butts for years, you never show up, you better show up for this issue, because if you don't, don't cry later when you're sick and you have leukemia or cancer, like other cities are doing. People are crying and saying, "Help us." So let's get rid of this. So, I have some information for the Town Council regarding problems with the ILA, so that you're aware when you go to talk at Broward, you go, "Uh-uh, the language here, the language there." So, if you'll bear with me, I'll just go through some of the key points. Florida law has allowed the word recycle to mean incinerate. Now, reading the first page of your ILA, I'm all for it. Recycle, reuse, reduce, compost. What's wrong with zero waste? However, as you go into the ILA, and we have been advised by one of the top environmental lawyers the problems in the ILA, which you can then pick apart yourselves. I'm just here to bring you some information, okay? And we're here to support you, each and every one of you. We need to work together. We can't work separately on this issue, or we're going to lose, okay? Right. So, they want you to divert from landfill to incinerators. There is no such thing. All the toxic ash produced from incineration goes to a landfill. Out of every 100 tons of garbage and waste that's burned, 30 tons are ash. Now, have you ever weighed ash, any of you? You know how light it is, right? They don't talk about volume, they just talk about tonnage. How much volume of lightweight ash is 30 tons? Think about that. It's a lot. When they truck it to the landfill, it blows off the trucks into the neighbors. When they mix it in with the landfill, the wind takes it and blows it off to the residences that are nearby. So, the toxic gas, the toxic gas and the toxic ash is very much a red flag when they talk about this, getting rid of landfills. They're just trying to use wording to get you to agree, but I'm going to expose a lot more of the ILA. This agreement can allow Miami and Dade to send us their waste. You guys ready for 4,000 tons a day of waste from Miami to cart up to our area and burn in our skies? The largest capacity incinerator now can only handle 3,500 tons a day. So we're already over if we take Miami-Dade. Now, all of you know that in Miami-Doral, their incinerator burned down recently. Three weeks of black, noxious, toxic fumes, where they had to evacuate people. We can't evacuate our animals when we have an incident like that, where we have a meltdown, a fire. So that's a big concern that you can bring up to Broward. We have farm animals, and our people will not leave their animals. We won't do it. Now, half the cost of the county building a new incinerator is to be taxed to the public via property taxes. This is a $1 billion project, 50% of which they want the public to bear the cost. You are signing on, if you sign on to the agreement to build this incinerator, you're signing on to 40 years from the effective date. Forty years, you're going to be tied into an incinerator that requires constant waste to feed it, so that it's profitable.
Mary Ann?
Yes?
I want to hear everything you have to say.
I just have another page, real quick.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Because this is the only time I'm going to get to put it on YouTube, and people can listen to it.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for indulging me.
I want you to continue.
Thank you, all of you.
Please, hurry.
Oh, sorry about that. Section 5.5, it prohibits counties to limit waste or recycle, and this is language for incinerators. It's right in your ILA. They're already prohibiting you to reduce your waste. You've got to read this thing with a fine-tooth comb, guys. Minimum standards, the language they use in the ILA, means a certain amount of burnable materials must be incinerated. And if you try to minimize waste, it would violate the agreement. In other words, you have to feed the monster, or you're going to get surcharged. All our residents will be surcharged if we don't put enough waste into it. 5.6, cooperation. Sounds nice, doesn't it? It means you are locked into the agreement and prohibited to resist. Who picks the technical experts that are going to advise what we should do with our waste? Well, the Arcadis, I believe that's the name of the company that they chose, they are so pro-incinerator. All their surveys, it's pro-incinerator. And you know what I find is really biased? They offer to build the incinerator too. It's a nice motive, isn't it? Just putting it out there, guys. We want zero-to-waste consultants. These are the people that can tell us, "How can we reduce our waste to 80%? How can we reduce by composting?" Other cities are doing composting. Toronto does composting, they sell their black soil all the time, and they've reduced their waste significantly. And all the people there for years have been using a third container just for vegetative Very soon, I'll be done. The funding for the public relations, you know what they're going to use that funding for? They're going to promote incinerators. They're not going to promote zero waste. So just to be aware of it, we need as much money spent on zero-waste consultants and in the PR to our residents, so that they're not brainwashed thinking that incinerators are the answer to everything. The word flow control in the ILA, it means it ensures a constant amount of waste for the incinerator. It's a need to feed, or it can't afford to operate, taxpayers will be forced to subsidize it. There's over 26 municipalities that have gone bankrupt because of the incinerators in their town. Now, the judges don't allow them to go bankrupt. You know what they make them do? They make them put the property taxes up on the residents in order to pay the bill, whether you can afford it or not. So I'm just giving you a big red flag warning here, what can happen. The counties and cities cannot minimize or recycle the waste after the foundation or the formation of the body in the ILA. You cannot, after that, even have a program to recycle, minimize compost. Be aware of that. This is such a large issue. I want our public to know about this. We need some workshops, we need facts, we need data, because you're going to need it when you go up against Broward, because they've got some pretty slick people up there, okay? But they're not going to outslick us, because we are pioneers. We came here, we fought for this area, and we're not going to let them kill it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you for all the research on that. All right. Board reports. Do you have any board reports this evening?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council, George Morris, Chair of the Drainage Board. Very quick report. The meeting was canceled.
All right.
Okay, so that was that. On another note, on the Astronite Foundation, I just want to touch base with you all. We had a meeting the other day, and we were discussing upcoming carnival. I say upcoming, because before, we know it's going to be here. We're approximately six months away, so we're starting our planning phase here. We're thinking, you know, trying to be proactive versus reactive. So we're reaching out to vendors and food trucks and sponsors, et cetera. We have a website set up. The website for anybody who wants to be involved or contact us is SWRCountryFair.com. We've also, our board has set up a couple different levels of sponsorship, starting with nickel for $500, bronze for $1,000, silver for $2,500, gold for $5,000, and platinum for $10,000. The platinum would be one single person. We're looking to potentially name the carnival, you know, it could be XYZ, Carnival, Country Fair, et cetera. So we're looking at different alternative ways to raise money and try and, you know, up the ante and try and do a better job this year, and keep building on that. Our board has also discussed in the past with respect to trying to see how we can give back to the town and sponsor, you know, the different parks and things that we do. We've, so we're looking for different options. I've been in touch with Andy about some things. We're looking to maybe improve some of the parks and do some things. So that pretty much sums up the Astronite Foundation, Southwest Ranches Park Foundation. Again, we're looking for food trucks and sponsors and things of that nature, and potentially maybe the town once again involved in putting a stage and maybe sponsoring some music. We did some music the last year, and it was a wonderful thing, you know, the family was... You know, the families came out, they set up blankets, they, you know, something. So, maybe, you know, again, if, you know, I don't want to use this time to discuss that, obviously, but I'd certainly like to put on the table to potentially maybe sponsor a stage, reach out to another city, the city of Sunrise, and other cities have these portable stages, and maybe they can donate to us, so we can put a stage there, so at least we can get a stage. And that would be another reason for maybe for somebody to sponsor, maybe have music events on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or involve the community, whether it be a dance company, a karate display, or, you know, or somebody, a local artist, or someone wants to play guitar, banjo, I don't know. We have a lot of people, talented people in our community. So, I would want the stage there to have that platform, to involve the community, to bring out the community. So, these are some of the ideas that we're bouncing around on our board, trying to expand on the carnival, so we're looking forward to this year. The dates of the carnival, again, coming up soon, is going to be in 2024, the first, about the second week in January, the Martin Luther King Holiday. It's going to be on the Thursday, January 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th, and ending on Martin Luther King, January 15th. So, those are the days. Everybody, please come out, enjoy. It's usually a great time of the year. It's a wonderful event, family event. Look forward to seeing you all, and I'll keep you updated as we go. Thank you. Thank you for your support. Think about that stage. Think about that. Help us out. Thank you.
Thank you, George. That's exciting. It's exciting to see that coming back. So, appreciate all the work on that. Seeing other, no additional board reports, council member comments.
I'll go.
All right. Thank you. I'll let you. Awesome.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Town Hall, and thank you for coming. Just a few quick things, notifications, starting with our next hazmat, which is at the barn on the 29th of July. We have a second code hearing this month. It's going to be on the 27th at 10:00 a.m. here at Town Hall. We have the Flowmobile on the 28th of June. You need to make a reservation with Deborah at the Clerk's Office to use that facility. We have a preliminary, really good news from Broward County Property Appraiser, we have a preliminary taxable value report of 15.62%, which roughly translates to an additional $1 million in revenue from Broward County directly to the town. So, this is a preliminary number. The hard number will come here at the end of the month, beginning of July. We have, let's see, I have been assured by the contractor that the first speed pole is going to go up on 186th next week. I was assured, and he swore on his, he swore on his life and on his child, his firstborn child. So, I'm going to be out of town next week. I expect to come rolling.
Who enforces that? That's what I want to know.
I'm going to be out of town next week. I'm going to be coming back in town. That's the first street I'm going down.
Nice. That's awesome, though.
So, we'll see, we'll see how that works out. So, that's the trial poll. We have all the equipment, we have the poll. We just have to have the contractor, who's very famous in town, is going to, you know, put it in. So, we can move forward to that, because I'm really looking forward to utilizing this tool to help with the speeding as we go down the line, you know? And those are all the comments I have right now. I have more on agenda items, but we'll wait till the agenda and get into that.
All right, awesome. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. Okay, thank you, Bob.
All right, good evening, folks. Just a quick congratulations. Yesterday was graduation at West Broward High School. So, most of our kids go there. So, congratulations to all of our new graduates. And Archbishop McCarthy actually had their graduation on the 26th last month. So, they're already done and out of school, and our kids wrap up, I think, is it Friday they're all finished? But yeah, yeah, graduation was yesterday, though, at West Broward. So, we know a lot of kids that are graduating. So, best of luck on future endeavors. Just a quick update on the MPO. You know, Andy always gives me these long summaries of what goes on, and they're always interesting to read, but I never see any of these things go on at the meeting. I guess we just vote on them and we move on. But something that was the mainstay of the meeting today, through the federal infrastructure plan, our Florida federal, Debbie Wasserman Schultz at AL got Broward County $15 million to improve the, they call them grade crossings, railroad tracks. Every time you cross the tracks, you're going over a grade crossing. Well, in the last couple of years, we've had over 200 people die on the FEC tracks because they're generally trying to go around, 25% of the deaths are people going around the gates. I mean, who would have heard of such a thing? So, they've gotten 15 million from the federal government, and that is going to start, I believe, in August. They're going to start changing the gate structures so you can't drive around them anymore. I mean, it just amazes me, people drive around a train gate. I grew up with them. I guess maybe that's what's different. Well, anyway, so that's going to start to happen. Most of them are going to be gate improvements, but I believe they also said they were going to try to go bridges over the more extreme, larger intersections like, say, Broward Boulevard, where the trains cross. So, it's good discussion on that today of many, many speeches thanking and, of course, giving, I mean, Debbie Wasserman Schultz has been pushing for this since she learned about it about a year ago. And it just amazes me, in the last five years, 200 people have been killed by trains. That's step one. Now, the next big problem is pedestrians. We don't have any fences. I mean, where I grew up, the trains didn't have fences around them there either, and nobody ever got hit by trains. But apparently, the train corridors become corridors for the homeless to live. And they cross the tracks without checking, without thinking, you know, in various states of whatever, drunk people seem to get killed. I've seen that in the newspapers. So, they don't have the money yet on replacing the bits of fence that are there and really fence it from crossing to crossing, but that's the next thing that they're asking for. And then the third thing, I was speaking to Mayor Tentralis today of Fort Lauderdale, and they're actually trying to get funding for a two-mile-long tunnel to basically go under the majority of Fort Lauderdale so they don't have to deal with these types of issues. And if you've ever been down to Riverwalk, there's that one bridge that opens and closes that takes five minutes to open. That's part of, you know, the New River, so it's one of the busiest waterways in Broward County. And they'd really like to put that underground, and also it eliminates the noise, the dangers, et cetera. So, that's probably a billion to $2 billion project like the one down in Miami was. So, interesting meeting. They, I got in touch also with Emil today because they're looking to raise our rate two cents per capita. So, it's not a big fund for us. We pay $600 a year to the MPO. They barely get by on what we give them for this kind of money, so they're looking for two cents more. And, well, we should get a bill in July for what it is. So, you know, either contact Brian, like I said today, or just wait and it'll come in the mail. I just figured to get a jump on it budget-wise, so, good, good. Okay, so that's the MPO update. We also had a noise ordinance workshop last month on the 25th, very well attended. You can catch it on YouTube. Remember, folks, everything we do is on YouTube now. So, if you can't make the meeting, please, you know, at your convenience and at your leisure, you can watch it on the town's official YouTube channel to get all caught up. We did get some usable feedback on the noise ordinance. You know, the mayor had brought this up because there are issues both ways. I mean, there are people that are very comfortable with it, there are other people that don't really like the way we enforce it, et cetera, et cetera. So, we got some feedback on residents. We don't have a date yet for when we're going to, if we act on it, but when we, we're going to discuss and act on it. So, pay attention to the town's social media sources, you know, and then, once you see something coming up on that topic, then obviously you can go get the agenda and pull it down to see what we're going to discuss. Notably, there were no, there were no suggestions to repeal it. So, I think people think there's a benefit to it, it's just we probably just need to tweak it. So, again, pay attention for more detail on future council meetings, and also, if you want to discuss it, call any of us, but I'll give out my phone number one more time, 954-801-1758. If you Google Bob Hartman, that seems to be the only one you get. So, my phone number's out there. So, if you want to discuss any further, please give me a ring. So, now, let's see, incinerator update. Everybody seems to have that on their mind, and there is a tremendous amount that we need to do. I think we need resident input, which we're getting a tremendous amount tonight. I've gotten phone calls, we're hearing about it now at all the HOA meetings, which is good, the buzz is building on it. But for those who don't know, and I know you've heard a couple of conversations, Broward County formed a solid waste management group to address Broward's ever-growing solid waste issue. They've been meeting, I believe, for two years on this pretty actively. It's been, it's probably three years now, actually, but there's been a group that has been trying to work through building this authority agreement, basically build the organization that will do whatever it is that they want to carry out. The challenge that I'm seeing with this, though, is they've all, even though if you look through the ILA, there's no word of incinerator in there. I searched the document. There is? I missed it. I must have spelled it wrong, because there is none. Okay. Oh, waste to energy, yep, that's something else, folks. You've heard some, yeah, you've heard some references to the different euphemisms they use. They call it plasma stream. They're trying to dress up burning garbage a million different ways. And, you know, what they're also trying to do is make it as palatable as possible. And the way they do that is raise the temperature. I've been doing my homework on this. When you have an incinerator that's burning at 1,000 degrees, certain elements don't burn. They just stay and they go out into the atmosphere. When you raise it up to 2,000 degrees, a whole different thing happens. Molecularly, they start to break down. Then the mercury becomes free and can attach to anything. So, it's great. You get rid of more garbage more quickly, but you contaminate the air that much more faster with that much more waste. One of the things, and I agree, I'll get to it, but we do need to look at the language that you guys were bringing us. I just don't know how to implement that. I'm not sure if we do want to make any changes, how we would go about doing that. That's probably a Richard question. I'm not sure if you're even familiar with the ILA that we're mentioning.
That's more of Keith's. He's been working on that one, but I mean, again, we would look at all the language and whatever we have room to do.
Okay, okay. So, just so, again, just to cap off, for those who haven't heard about it, they're looking for this over on the dump site that's over on Sheridan and 27. We only learned the other night, believe it or not, Monday night, Barbara, Dr. Barbara Sharif, or is she mayor, or is she commissioner? What's the right thing to call her? Mayor?
Doctor.
Okay, doctor. That's always safe.
Former mayor.
Yeah, Dr. Sharif was at the country estates meeting the other night, really just to introduce herself, because she's running again. But she's also been involved in these talks since they started. She's been on the, she was on the county commission, I think, she said, 12 years, 13 years? So, she knows what is going on with this, and she disclosed to us, this is only the first incinerator that they need to build. Based on the capacities, the numbers, the growth expectations, and everything else, this, they're going to need a second one. They need the first one to make their date of 2030 to be able to, Broward, to consume enough of its waste. Then, by 2050, they have to build a second one, again, based on their growth assumptions. I don't know where they're going to put all these people, where they need to keep doubling things, but it's pretty crazy what's going on. One of the things that occurred to me when I was thinking about this over the last couple of days, I don't know if we want to engage Barbara Sharif in any way, either as a friendly consultant or as a professional consultant, because she seemed to know what's going on. And since she's not on the county and does, the county commission, and she doesn't have any motivation there to be on their side, I wonder if she couldn't help us out by guiding us through or giving us a workshop on her vision of start to finish where we are and how we got here? So, something to think about. You know, when I, when I'm thinking about all this, I, we have a couple of county commissioners coming by and telling us what's going on with this, and where is Senator Geller? Isn't he our commissioner? Isn't he ours? I hear he would stand behind us. How do we get him engaged?
Yeah, Steve Geller and Nan Rich both represent Southwest Ranches.
Right.
And he's actually, I believe he'll, he's scheduled to come see us in August. Can certainly try to get him in sooner if you would like.
Do we want to give him a heads up that this is a hot topic for us?
When I would, both of our district commissioners, I would.
I wouldn't want to ambush them.
Pass that along, too.
Perfect.
And we can do that.
Good, good, good. Thank you. We also learned the recycling program that the county commission pitched us on, which I was shocked when I heard it a couple of years ago, all recycled. That was their discussion when they came to us originally, all recycling. And I thought, with recycling in the tank at the time, I didn't see how they could do it economically, but what it comes down to is I don't think that was ever the goal. And again, you talk about, I worked for FDOT for a long time. The consulting engineers know everything that's going on, and they, they can manage things as well. So, if we've already selected a consulting company that specializes in incinerators, we're going to have to fight that much harder, because their mind is made up, even though it's not a word in the document. And I agree, we should not support any incinerators, and we got to be really careful here, folks, because you've heard NIMBY, "Not in my backyard." So, whose backyard should it go in? It shouldn't, exactly. If we keep saying, now, you know, I can talk all about the impacts, I've been reading this stuff nonstop for over a week now. Yeah, our animals are affected, we're affected, everything is affected by this. Now, one of the benefits, they say, they build the smokestacks 200 feet tall for a reason. It carries that much further before it starts to land. So, what's between here and 100 miles, winds are generally out of the southeast, that's going to go up right across the Everglades, okay, which is toxic with mercury today, right, Jim? Then, it's going to go to the Gulf of Mexico, will be contaminating that with Broward County garbage. Then, it's going to go on to the southern Mississippi Basin, which is all farmland. Now, that's about 500 miles from here, but that stuff doesn't fall down fast. Takes a long time to drift and come down. So, we won't only be, you know, making our own areas in Broward County toxic, but we're really contaminating a big part of the country. People that don't deserve it either. So, we really need to come up with a plan on how to block this incinerator. So, there are some things we need to do. First, I'd like to sponsor a resolution from the council that basically alerts the Broward County Solid Waste, whatever the working group's official name is, let them know that we are not in favor of this. We're for a zero-waste solution that doesn't create any, you know, any waste. And I don't know if we also want to send that to DEP in Tallahassee, anybody who we can get the word out to. Obviously, the Sun Sentinel, we want to publicize this as much as possible, because we're going to come in the door as pariahs, because they know we don't want it, and we have to convince a whole lot of other groups that they don't want it either for the same reasons, and it's not the backyard issue. All right, I, as I mentioned, I reviewed the agreements that Richard and Mary Ann had emailed out to us today. I like the language provided by them. Again, to Richard or to Keith, when he comes back, I'm not sure how we could implement the changes. We've already voted on it and pushed it forward. I saw somewhere, somebody sent an email saying that since we did it in the last meeting, we can change it. We can change it. That's not the issue. I don't know if they'll still accept our changes.
You can reconsider.
Okay, motion to reconsider. That's right, Neil, you must have been talking to them, because I did see Robert's Rules of Order in that email. So, anyway, just moving on, I mean, I've done the research to come up to speed on incinerator technologies. I learned a lot by reading the, the design-build specifications for this one that they're touting up in Palm Beach County. It's relatively new, so it's relatively clean compared to the old wheel operator sites. But Andy is coordinating a visit up there. I don't know if you would open it to residents or just the council, or what you want to do.
I'll see what response I get back from them first.
Okay, okay. But I'd like to go up and see this facility. I've been up to a number of different Palm Beach facilities for wastewater treatment and other types of things, and they do a good job. I'd like to see, you know, the outcome. If you want to read the industry trade papers, go out to the American Society of Mechanical Engineers. They're the ones who designed these things. And they are very positive towards waste-to-energy conversion and a million other things they call it. So I, there's a lot of data out there on the incinerators. I've also asked Andy to try to collect any information that the, the working group has already put together. I mean, they've made decisions. I'd like to see those decisions. I'd like to know who voted for this thing, so if I can call them and say, you know, what was your thinking? All right, moving on, I should have warned you upfront, Steve. So we, next, we need help. We need help. And you guys had kind of summarized it. We need people to do research. You're doing it, I'm doing it, there's a huge amount of information, I'll never get through it all. We need some team members to start collating that. If we've got similar things that we can find on the internet that relate to this, let's collect it all. I talked to Andy about possibly posting this stuff on the town websites, so everybody has access to it and can read for themselves. You know, the problem with Earth Justice Network, I mentioned that to a friend of mine the other day, he went immediately political. So we have to be prepared, right? If that's viewed as this type of an organization, let's find something maybe a little more conservative that says something similar. How do you do that? We need to go out and research it. So, you know, we're going to need to research, collect, collate, and brief the community and the council on items that are relevant to the town and strategizing our approach on this. I mean, we're talking all around the edges. Do we want to sue them? I mean, that's the direct, direct go-to. If we want to sue them, we should be appropriating money for next year if we're, I mean, I'm only throwing these things out, I'm not making any suggestion. But we could use help from the community on formulating a communication strategy to move forward against these antiquated facilities. I'd like to create a board, we'll figure out the name later. We already have residents mobilizing. I mentioned that Richard and Mary Ann were, you know, working with EJN, and they presented over at the Sunshine Ranches meeting last week. Debbie Green's engaged, she just happens to have an environmental engineer in the family she can lean on. And this is somebody who grew up in town here that thinks this is a bad idea. You know, we also had, hear Newell talking about it, he's lived here, he's been engaged in this discussion before when the original dump was built. Jim, I hear you talking about it. I think we need to put together a group that will organize and help support the council with information, strategy, whatever it takes to, to, to get through this. Because we have five smart guys up here, except for me, four smart guys up here, but when you start adding up the horsepower we have in our community and the effort that we can put behind this, I think we, we need to put that together. So I don't know if we have any thoughts, if we want to figure that out tonight. I'd suggest we put that together, and I think we also need a workshop, so we can figure out what it is we want to do and perhaps communicate to a group like that. All right. So finally, at Country Estates the other night, something became abundantly clear to me. A couple of people had gotten up and spoken their piece, and I was pretty quiet at Country Estates. I knew a couple of the details about this facility, but I didn't feel comfortable talking about it for two reasons. One, I don't like to discuss things until I'm informed. Funny how that works. But the other thing is, I did not want to conflict with what Gary had to say about it, what you had to say, anything Jim had to say. I mean, we, we're not educated yet, we're not there. It's going to take some time before we, we have what we need. I would really like to see, Steve, you lead this effort. I'm asking you, on all of our behalf, to lead this effort, because you're well-known within, and respected within the county, and one voice for our community, not five of us, and then if we put a board of 10 people together, now where there's 25 of us, when you start talking about all the people, I think we need one person to speak on our behalf, and I would appreciate if you take that challenge.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, yeah. I mean, I, I, I would, I would be honored to do that. I expected to, I mean, that was my intention, was to kind of take the mantle there. But to your point, this, I'm, I may be mayor, but I'm one guy, right? So we, as a community, need to, as we're doing, and I'm impressed how we're doing it, come together and, as you said, Bob, kind of, you know, have that, have all that, that brain power that coming together to, to move forward. My, I don't want to, I was going to say some of the, but I'll say a few things, and I may say a few more later. But I, I think that because we're in this early stage, where we're gaining a lot of information, we're seeing a lot of things that, we could do this, we could do that, maybe that's the strategy, maybe this is the strategy. And so I, I just, I would just say that from my perspective, I'm absorbing. I'm absorbing. And I think that we need to continue to gather this, I don't know, not, not for too much longer, because this, this train's moving, but for at least the next couple of weeks anyway, kind of continue to absorb. And, and then with the knowledge, then put together a strategy that, to me, number one, and I, and I totally get what you're saying, to me, number one, is to make sure that it does not happen in Southwest Ranches. I mean, I hate to say that, I hate to be that selfish guy, but I'm going to be that selfish guy. For really, western Broward County, it, it does not belong out here, because, for all kinds of reasons, and you all know it, I won't go into it on that now. If we can eliminate it from Broward County altogether, that is, that is a huge win. That is a huge win. And that should be a, a goal, certainly. But, but my primary goal is, is to save our water, and to save our animals, and to save our health out here, to be honest with you. That's my primary. And so, but we've got to come up with the right strategy to do that. And it's going to be a multi-pronged strategy of working through individuals here in Broward County that, that can make decisions one way or the other. It's going to be through developing a wide range of research that we can bring to bear that cannot be ignored. It's going to be making sure, and this is something I learned tonight, I mean, as, as everybody speaks, I learn more and more. I did not realize that the consultants that were in this agreement actually had a, had a, you know, a dog in the fight. That, that's unacceptable, you know, that's unacceptable. And so, so we've got to come up with those things, you know, we've, we've got to come up with the points. We're not going to win every point that we make in our communication. So we've got to come up with the points that count, and focus on those, and, and, and work out a strategy that's going to be successful. So, so I, I am, I'm impressed, and it's awesome to see all the knowledge and all the information that's coming here. My only warning is, let's not, let's not prematurely choose a path, yet. Because we don't have enough information to make the right choice yet. But we will make a, a choice, and we will pursue it with our neighbors and with as many allies in Broward County as we can get. So.
Good. Thank you. Just one last thing. You know, neighbors here and in YouTube land, council, we have a new enemy trying to degrade our, our lifestyle, our unique lifestyle. How will rural feel? And what kind of lifestyle will we live if our horses can't eat our grass anymore because of heavy metal contamination? Or drink, drink our groundwater because it's contaminated from leachate from the, the ash that they're going to be piling up? Or be threatened by the contaminants that they're going to breathe? I'm talking about horses. How do we protect our families? Okay? We need to fight this. I think everybody agrees. Residents, we need your help. So, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move on from this topic, just, just one thing I want to go back and clarify. Councilmember Hartman called for a resolution in opposition, but there was really no discussion on that. So I just want to make sure if there's consensus from the council on that, which I, I believe there is, but I want to make sure for the record there is consensus before we start to draft something there.
Yes, definitely. I mean, I'm definitely behind it.
Hundred percent.
Yep, yep.
I, I would have guessed, but for the record, I certainly wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. David, you want to go?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. And yeah, I was going to ask Bob to follow up on that resolution, seeing if you're going to make it orally now, I needed a second, but we're going to draft something. That's even better. All right. Let's see, let's begin. Residents, keep your eyes and ears open for mail theft, auto burglaries. Davie Police has their program of going out to your cars, lock them up at nine o'clock, make sure your mail is checked before nine o'clock. Make sure you got your key fobs in your home, don't leave firearms in your vehicles. Reason I'm bringing this up is, I was advised yesterday that there was another mail theft in Sunshine Ranches, broad daylight, and the person had a tag on their car. They will be caught. But I actually saw the video, and I couldn't believe they did it broad daylight. Next, you folks, I'm going to talk about the mural over at the Founder's Park. If you take a drive out Griffin Road, go east, just before you get to the CVS on the right, is the Founder's Park. And Laura Warren was contracted to do her beautiful talent. And if you go by there, it's a really amazing display. She is really doing an amazing job, and it looks really, really nice. And I'm very impressed with the organization from the Rural Arts and Design Advisory Board in making sure that they selected a very, very competent artist to do this work, and it's looking great. June officially begins hurricane season. And make sure that you read the materials put out by the town and try to get your hurricane supplies together. You know, it's going to be a different hurricane season this season, based upon changes in homeowners' insurance. Moving on, I want to give a police citation report for various districts in the town. The least number of citations was issued in District 1, three, and all of those were on the perimeter roads. And we had speeding, license suspended without knowledge, and then somebody ran a red light. Now we go to District 2, 42 citations. All of those citations, except for one, were on Griffin Road. So I don't know if you can consider it an interior road, that's Griffin Road, and those could be anybody driving on the road. The one interior, you know, it could be a resident, could not, but like I said, we had only one on the interior road in District 2. District 3, we had a total of 34 citations, 74 citations. Thirty-four of those citations were on the interior roads, ranging from 172nd to Dykes and 172nd again, Dykes. So they, they were, Davie Police is pretty busy over in District 3, 74 citations, 34 on the interior roads. District 4, that's from volunteer to Flamingo. 155 citations. And of those, 34 were on the interior roads. And we had most of them speeding, obviously. And you look through the list, it's speeding, speeding, speeding along the way. There's a misuse of a dealer plate, license, driver's license was not exhibited on demand, improper center lane use. But most of these citations were along Griffin Road. So I want to thank Davie Police for your efforts in slowing down our traffic. If you do need those signs, I guess, Jim, you're going to talk about the sign? Okay, I'll leave that for you. All right. My position on the incinerator issue. Now, when we had the ILA on the last meeting, I was not feeling very comfortable with that. The reason that I was persuaded at that meeting, my mind was not made up at the beginning. Reason I found supporting it is, we need a seat at the table. If we don't have a seat at the table, we're nothing. That's, we couldn't, we can't invoice opposition. So we got a seat at the table, that was important. A key memo of the, a key issue for this is Section 3.3.3 states that once their official plan is drawn up, we have 120 days to ratify it. That allows us to exit at a later date if we desire. So that's a very important provision of that ILA. Now, another issue that was brought up, I never would have voted for that ILA if we were denied our right to challenge this in the courts. That never would have happened. I want to make sure we had that right, and that was a, a primary question that I had. I also support the Homeowners Association and our neighbors organizing for this. I thank you, you're doing a really good job. I think it's a bad, bad, bad idea to put any kind of solid waste disposal over our drinking water. This is not, and, and when I say our drinking water, I don't mean just Southwest Ranches. There are other municipalities have their municipal wells very close to us, right along I-75. And once that water's contaminated, I don't know where they're going to go. They're going to run the water lines all the way, they can't run in Everglades, so they're going to have to go all the way around Tamiami Trail, all the way to the, the west coast for water. It makes no sense. Now, if, as I wrote in the D R W a few months ago, about groundwater contamination, our drinking water contamination, that saltwater intrusion is, is right along the turnpike area now, the last time I checked. And if we were to put something like an incinerator that would potentially contaminate groundwater, let's put it where saltwater is. Because we don't drink saltwater. It doesn't make sense. So if, if they really are that gung-ho about having an incinerator, put it where it won't can, the, the groundwater's not important for everybody in Broward County and most of South Florida. So, yeah, that kind of wraps it up for me, and turn it back over.
Great. Thank you, David. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Thank all the residents that spoke. And I'd especially like to say thank you, Ms. Mary Ann Allen, for your comments and for asking the residents to get behind this council and support this council. This council will do everything we can to stop that incinerator. You've heard each one of the council members speak, all right? I don't have to go back over everything that was said, but this council will fight. We live here. We're not representative from outside that come in. This is our town also. I've been here almost 40 years, just like some of you all. We will fight to keep it out, and we will do everything we can. But as David and Bob and Gary and Steve said, we need a seat at the table. That's what we did. We got a seat at the table. So when we get to that table, if we can make changes, I damn sure believe we'll do that. And Steve, thank you for accepting that nomination to take, to take that. I, I think it's a great thing for the town that, you know, to lead us into that, and I appreciate it. I'd like to say that I'm, I'm a little concerned about something that the state passed here recently, and that has to do with neighbors turning neighbors in for code enforcement. I was faced with a situation here this past week, week and a half, where I had a neighbor that called anonymously, just a phone number, complaining about another neighbor. The neighbor was putting up a fence, and it was an illegal fence with no permit. He would not be the complainant. I couldn't be the complainant, because it wasn't me that was, you know, it was the neighbor. So, long story short, the code did go out, they did cease, and the order to go to work made them stop. They are going to come in to get a permit, but we need to do something about this. I'm not saying the code needs to go out and nitpick and, and get on to people for every little thing out there, but somehow, some way, if you're in violation of code, whether it's fulfill, putting a, a permanent structure next to somebody else's house, if that's against code, and that's ruining the lifestyle that we like here, fill in the property so your neighbors flood, putting a house too close to the property, then something needs to be done about that. Not sure what, but maybe, just maybe, if we could have some kind of a workshop, or get together, a discussion, or, or some way before a meeting one night to discuss this, I'd really like to do that. It's really a shame that we, that we can't live the rural lifestyle that we like, because we have neighbors that come out here and think that they can do whatever they want to do when they want to do it. And we see it, we see it all the time. And the only, only thing that's, you know, stopping it, or was stopping it, was neighbors calling and complaining. We can't ask Coolio and his crew to ride around all day long and look for these problems. So I'd like to just see if the council would be willing to have some kind of a workshop in the future, or if the town would be invited to come in and give suggestions, just as we did about the Airbnbs here not long ago. So that's something I'd like to see. And the Rural Arts Board was not here this evening to give a board report, but I would like to remind everybody and the residents that the calendar is coming up, and the pictures for the calendar will be chosen by the board. We usually have around 30 pictures to choose from, so if you'd like to see your picture on the town calendar, and everybody buys that town calendar, get your photos in. I think it's September the, excuse me, September the 5th is the deadline, and, you know, they greatly appreciate the photos coming in to give them something to, to look at. And lastly, the trailers, we haven't got many requests for the trailers. I thought those trailers would be moving around helter-skelter, just, they'd burn the wheels off of them, but I haven't gotten many requests. So if you're interested in having one of those speed trailers in your neighborhood, give myself or give Tom a call here at Town Hall, and we'll get it out to your, to your street. All right? And if it's facing the wrong way, pick it up and turn it around, it's a trailer. Just pick the tongue up, walk it around, and make it face the way you want it to face. But give us a call. If not, we're just trying to randomly pick where we think that's at. But if you'd like to see one of these trailers in front of your place, give But if you'd like to see one of these trailers in front of your place, give me a call. And that permanent sign that's going in, I'd love to see a hundred of them around town in the future. So, you know, they cost money, but I'd love to see a hundred of them around town if at all possible. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm done.
Very good, thank you, Jim, appreciate it. All right. We've obviously covered a lot of ground tonight, so some of it I will bypass. But a couple of things, Jim, on the code, I certainly would support a workshop on that. What I, what I think I'm hearing, and I could be wrong, but what I think I'm hearing is not that the code is wrong, but that the process of getting it enforced is the issue. And so, so with that, to me, what that comes down to, because a lot of that is regulated by the state, it's out of our hands, what that comes down to is a discussion of which items are to be proactive and which ones are to be reactive. And so I would support that workshop, and I would love to hear from residents on what items should be proactive, what items should be reactive. And I think that's how we should structure that workshop, is maybe have a list of all of them there, you know, the different types of code, and see, you know, we have some that are already proactive, like fill, like properties that are not kept up. You know, there's a number of things that, where code goes out there, and nobody needs to complain about it because it's such a big deal that it needs to be handled right away. And so, so maybe there's more of those that need to be there. We don't want to, you know, I hear all the time, well, we don't want to be Weston, we don't want to be, you know, Pembroke Pines, where, you know, we're telling people, you know, that your color of your house is wrong, or, sorry, Mary. You know, we have, I neglected, we have, we are, we have a very, very special friend. Mary, come on up here for a second, because you are a very special, Mary used to live in town here, she's now a Commissioner for Weston, she is our friend, she supports us in many things, and she does an amazing job.
I have to say, you guys are absolutely incredible. I come here, I learn something new each time. For all the sophistication that we have out in Weston supposedly, look what I just found out about this ILA. And we're now scrambling, trying to figure out this whole incinerator thing, and we read nothing about incinerators, and we're all signing it thinking this is such a great thing, putting poison in our backyard. So, thanks, you guys.
Yeah, awesome, thank you, thank you. So, my point was that Weston has a lot more, has much stricter regulations on how to, you know, colors their house and how, all that kind of stuff. And so I hear all the time, well, we don't want to become Weston. Well, we don't, we don't, that's why we're a separate community, a separate municipality. But our laws and our ordinances are not those. So, so should we enforce our ordinances or not? You know, well, if we are going, you know, if we have an ordinance on the books, if it's no good, we should get rid of it. If it's good, we should enforce it, right? That's kind of the way I look at it. But, but we, on the other hand, we don't want, you know, we don't want to create a code nightmare out there. So, so that, that's kind of is, is where I'd like to see. Are there items out there that are reactive now, where neighbors need to turn in neighbors to get things enforced, that maybe we think it would be better if those were handled by code directly?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if you may, try me on that. An important thing to remember is our code department consists of three and a half people. And if you think they've got time to go perusing, if anybody thinks they have time to go running around town for the fun of it, citing, citing people they really don't know the town at all. I mean, we run, we run a very tight ship, and code is very much a part of that.
Absolutely.
You know, so I think everybody needs to emphasize that. We're not talking about code gone wild here, or anything like that. Everybody's fear, you know. So I just want to emphasize that to, to the general public who's listening, it's only a few people that do this. And there is paperwork involved, and I guarantee you, fifty percent of their time is spent just trying to process that.
Yeah.
You know, as far as that goes. So, I just wanted to point that out, that's all.
Yep, no, great point, absolutely, you're right. And don't misunderstand my comments, I'm just saying we need a workshop on it, I'm not saying that we need to change everything. I'm, I'm saying I want to hear from the residents what they want, that's what I'm saying. So, but yeah, it's a great point, we can't, you know, and that's, I don't think anybody in town wants to go there, so, including your mayor. Okay, so, yeah, David.
One issue, one issue that I forgot to mention, I'm sorry. I learned, it wasn't yesterday, the day before, that Pembroke Pines Mayor Frank Ortiz is not seeking reelection.
Right.
And I think this would, the incinerator issue would be an issue to get the prospective candidates running for mayor over there, to get them on board with us. So, it's just an idea that I.
Yeah. Yeah. I think we've, I think we've got a good opportunity to, to start rebuilding some connections with Pembroke Pines as, as things change. That certainly is the goal, certainly is my goal, and I'll be straight up and tell you about it. You know, that being, being enemies with your neighbor is, is not beneficial to either side. And, and.
All we can do.
I would, all we can, well, we have to do our part, you know, we have to do our part, and we have to be willing, we have to be willing, we can't, you know. I'll leave it there, we have to be willing. The next topic I wanted to touch on was the Airbnbs. I want to make sure that we're working on that. I know we, we took a look at what Davy had done, which was outstanding, by the way, they did a really nice job. And Andy, I just want to make sure, assuming the rest of the council's on board, I think we're good, that we, I think we've all seen that, and have we all seen what Davy did there?
I'm on board, I'm on board.
Okay, okay, I had to look like baby. Okay, okay, all right. So, I think, I think, you know, I'm not above using some other municipalities' work as a guide, so I think they did a great job, and I give them kudos for it, I give them full credit for it, but let's, let's tailor it to what we've got and get it in front of the councils as soon as we can.
Yeah, we'll get it drafted for you, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. All right, and the carnival, you know, really appreciate all the work and everything that goes into that carnival. I don't, I don't know what you're doing, George, starting six months ahead of time, you know, really, you know, I think, you know, thirty, forty-five days is really all you need. I think you're, I think you're, you know, stretching it out here. But, no, really, really a great job. I'm certainly for, you know, seeing what we can do with a stage, I think that opens up some new things. Look, at the end of the day, to me, this is a celebration of our folks in our community, that's what this is. It's a way to get everybody out, everybody in one place, get the families out, get everybody laughing, enjoying, seeing one another, and in a friendly, enjoyable conversation. It's about being a community. And so, all the things, you know, you know, I want every year to be a little better than the year before, and so, so the pressure's on, George. But, but I don't know if we can do a stage or not, but I certainly support trying to get that done, you know. I don't know, council, are we, are we?
George can build one.
George can build one, George can do anything.
I know, have it down by Tuesday.
Mayor, if we could.
Mayor, if we could. If we could get the Hialeah Hillbillies back, that'd be good.
That was good, it was good. It was enjoyable.
It was nice.
My family enjoyed it, we were out there, and we enjoyed it, we enjoyed it, on that, on that nice turf that was out there, too. Yep, it's good stuff. All right, the last thing I wanted to touch on, obviously, was the incinerator and that whole process. I said a lot of what I wanted to say already, that super proud of the way our community has responded to it, how they've jumped into it, come up with a lot of information, but we've got a ton of work to do. You know, we've got to come up with a strategy, and, and we, and I believe this strategy is, is not one that's going to work if it's us against the world. I believe it's one that we've got to determine the allies that we need to determine. This is, this is not good for a lot of folks. This is not good for all of Broward County, but I don't think all of Broward County's going to recognize that. But we've got neighbors that do recognize that, and, and will recognize that, and, and carry a lot of weight in this, in this county. So, so we've got work to do. I don't, I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to throw too much fire out at front, right? I would rather do it strategically and do it in a way where it's going to make a difference on the key votes that we need. At the end of the day, there's going to be some key votes, and I want to work to make sure that we have the friends we need who support us, who recognize what needs to be done when we get to those key votes, so that things go the way they need to go. So that's, you know, that's kind of how it, I see it, and how I would like to see it go. A last comment on that, I would love to see a, a group of residents that meets maybe every two weeks, you know, to, to, to be reporting on what they're finding, and that we can communicate, you know, what, what the town is doing. I don't want this communicated out on Facebook, I mean, it's fine to put it out on Facebook, but, but, you know, Facebook is not known for facts, okay? So, so I would rather be dealing with facts, and, and I would rather, and I love having that, that avenue to, for us to exchange what we've learned with residents, and for residents to give to us what, what we need to know to make an impact. So, I am, I, once again, I just, I'll say this, and I'll finish with this, I am so proud of this community and the residents here that we're working together, that we have not turned this into an us versus them kind of a situation, but we all recognize how critical this is, how important this is, and, and that we're all working together to get the right things done. So, thank you.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Clarifying question, do you support an advisory board, or you just want this thing to be more grassroots? Because if it's grassroots, we can't talk.
Yeah, we need to do it in a way, well, I, I think we should, I think we should advertise all those meetings, so that we can always be there and we can talk.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's something official?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think we, as a council, could talk about it separately if we meet a Publix anyway, because it's going to come before the.
Absolutely.
Mayor, do you want to put together an advisory board?
I do, yeah. I think so, I mean, unless, unless there's a reason why not to, but I would love to see, yeah, an advisory board, frankly, that meets every other week, and that, yeah, you know, is, is limited, and so it's not going to go on forever.
Yeah.
But till we, till we get past this.
Yeah, I'm fully in support of that. I think one of our first priorities is to establish, for the committee to establish a timeline, a critical path of, because we're all kind of hazy, we, we've got this in front of us. But we don't know what the next meeting's going to be, and the meetings that are coming up down the line, and what the agenda is.
Correct.
On all those, and I think that's where we may get blindsided. Something may get decided at a meeting that we were unable to be at, and, you know, all of a sudden, the deal's done, and, or something that we're.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've got the commitment through the ILA, and actually, the additional wording to the ILA, that we will be included in all those meetings, and as a matter of fact, we're going to have a meeting up front before those even kick off. That was what they committed to us, to state our concerns. So, so initially, to be honest with you, I want to be prepared for that initial meeting before things get kicked off, so we can set the tone for what our concerns are and what our objectives are, frankly. Because frankly, our objectives, I don't expect, I don't live in, you know, I don't live in Disney World, I don't expect this to be, but frankly, our objectives are what's best for Broward County. It's not like, it's not like.
It's not selfish.
Yeah, it's not selfish. So, so I think we can be very open to express that to the county as a whole, and let them know that.
Next meeting?
I don't think it's been scheduled yet, that, that pre-meeting, I don't think, so that's why, you know, it's.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we got to get our act together.
We have to.
Yeah.
We have to have a real watchdog group on it.
Yep.
You know, on the whole thing.
Well, I'm counting on, you know, administration, legal, to help us to make sure that we're aware of the, the county meetings that are going on. They have committed to us that we'll be involved in all that, but we need to hold, hold our feet to the fire, make sure that's done.
I agree totally.
Yeah, yeah. So, Andy, what would be the, how do we, how do we get that group started? Maybe, I mean, can we, can we just, and I'd just soon take a vote right here and, and establish it.
We can bring you a reso establishing that committee in two weeks at the very next meeting.
Let's do that.
Which will allow you time to, to consider who you may wish to appoint, so you can reach out to members of the community to decide, you know, get a sense of how many people you might want to put on that board, and what appointments you'd like to make as well. Not, not to say that the group can't continue to work as they are now.
Right.
Because I think that might be some of the people, just by coincidence, that you might appoint.
Right.
So, they can continue to work on that in the capacity they are now, as we establish that group and you appoint those people, then it'll become an official town advisory board.
I'll tell you, I'll get to, my, my initial thought is, I would like each of the HOAs that are in town that would like to participate, to, to nominate or to put forward two members to be on that, that committee. Beyond that, we may want to add some additional folks. I'm not saying limited to that, but I want to make sure that every HOA in town is represented and, you know, has maybe a primary and a backup, but two people there. And then if we have some folks that have done some special research that would like to, and have been especially involved, I have no problem adding more, but, but that's, that's kind of my thought.
Sure, and I'll say, since those will be public meetings, it would, the, the committee or the board might be who you comprise, who you appoint, but doesn't mean that other members of the public wouldn't.
Oh, sure.
Allow, participate and attend.
Oh, absolutely.
And so I, I mean, I know you know that, I'm just saying that for the members of the public, that they'd worry about not being appointed to that board if they want to get involved in it, they'd still have the opportunity to participate.
Yes, they would.
In the discussion.
Right, okay, I know we've got some comments up here, David and Bob.
On, on this board, it just occurred to me, because I see Maryann and Richard working really close together and exchanging, would this board now be subject to the Sunshine Law?
It would, which is something for folks that are on the board need to consider, is that if you're actually on the board, it's a great point, David, if you're actually on the board, then you can only talk about this at the board meetings. Any other time, you'd have to, well, you couldn't talk about it. So, something to be, to consider. Yeah, yeah, great point, David. Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, as I go through my, yep, sorry. As I go through my mind on people that I may want to support in this role, a lot of them are already on two boards.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't worry about that for this, because this is not a standing board that's going to go on forever.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll sunset.
All right, I think you got your, all right, very good. All right, so that concludes council comments, any legal comments tonight?
No legal comments tonight.
Great, thank you for joining us tonight, Richard, appreciate it. Andy?
Yes, thank you. First, it's nice to be back in my seat again. It wasn't the same watching you all on YouTube two weeks ago, so it's, it's certainly a pleasure to be back. To touch on the incinerator and the ILA, I did reach out to the League of Cities this morning and asked for kind of a score sheet of a spreadsheet of which municipalities have approved it, who's considering it, where they are in the process. I think there were six or seven agendas around the county that the item was on just last night. I haven't gotten response on that, but when I do, I will share that with you. And, and I'll say, to get, to get ahead of this and to get out in front, and I know Commissioner McPhee is here today, I did reach out to the Weston City Manager, Don Decker, last week, had a conversation about this. I, you know, hopefully Weston will be, will certainly be supportive of our efforts, I know they're watching it very closely. I also had a conversation last week and coffee this week with Charlie Dodge, and this was one of the topics of our discussion, and, and as I said to Charlie, maybe after all these years, we found the issue that Pembroke Pines and Southwest Ranches can agree on. I said, that alone would get attention to people at the county. So, I had suggested to him that, that, you know, there would be very possibly a resolution or some action taken by our council going forward, that I would share that with him, and, you know, I understand they have the same concern. I mean, they have residents who are probably physically locate, will be located closer to this incinerator than our residents, not that it's better or worse, but it's very much a concern for them as well. And, you know, at some point, I, I'll reach out, you know, I'll reach out to Davy, I'll reach out to Miramar, try to lock up that, that western corridor, I'll reach up to Sunrise as well, but something we may want to take to the Broward City and County Managers Association at some point as well. So, like I said, I, you know, I knew where the council was with this, I knew where the residents were, and that's why I started to reach out to the adjacent city managers on it.
Andy, I got a question, is it possible, and I'm sure you could do it, I know you can do anything, you're like Superman underneath that jacket, all right. I'd like to get a, a location for the various. I'd, I'd like to get a, um, a location for the various municipal wells that are within the range of, of this incinerator. I mean, Noel told me that Hollywood has one right off of 75, so.
The, the health department should have, should have that data, so that should be available to us that way.
Okay, I'm kind of really interested where, where these municipal wells are.
We can, we can reach out to the health department and we'll see what we get there.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the last note is, you were talking about, you, you all were having a conversation a little bit before about code enforcement reactive versus proactive. It is something I've talked to code enforcement about, they've, they've had some discussions within, in their department, because they have some of the knowledge of what calls come in, what complaints come in, and where they'll say, will you be the complainant on it? And a lot of times, people don't want to be the complainant. So, for the purpose of that future, that future workshop, we'll have some information for you from code enforcement as to some suggestions that they might find beneficial, not that, again, not that we want to be one of our neighboring municipalities, not to mention any names, but, but there may be some areas where we can protect the quality of life, uh, at the same time, we're protecting our residents from becoming a complainant and, and risk running, you know, running into the wrath of their neighbors. So, we'll, we'll have some of that to tee up. I think additional feedback from residents would be beneficial, uh, but, but we'll have some information for you to, to at least cede that discussion.
Awesome, that'd be great.
And the only other thing I have in closing is happy birthday to us. This, this was town's birthday week, week, or anniversary week.
Six.
We turned 23.
Wow, yeah.
That's my notes I forgot.
Been a good run, let's keep it going. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Andy. All right, item number nine.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the issuance of an extension to its emergency line of credit revolving note. Authorizing the issuance of a taxable note and increasing the maximum principal amount thereof from 10,000, I'm sorry, $10 million to $20 million. Authorizing the town to enter into an agreement extending and amending the line of credit agreement with TD Bank, N.A., and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Great, have motion and second. Um, I've got some comments on this item, I don't know if anybody else wants to speak on this.
I got a lot too.
Okay, go ahead.
I get to go first?
If you want.
Okay. Um, I just want to point out, there's been a lot of chatter concerning all of this, and I just wanted to come up with some facts that, that, you know, just, it's not even discussion items, it's just a reality. Our current line of credit is expiring, it's, uh, they're only good for five years. Um, that's the first, the first thing we got to do. We would be very irresponsible if we didn't reestablish that. Why we need this? Hurricane Wilma cost us 11 and 1/4 million dollars. We had to dip into our reserves to pay for it. That was in '05 and '06. Hurricane Irma cost four and a half million dollars in cleanup. That was, that's just a municipal cleanup within our town. Wilma, the funds that were going to be reimbursed by FEMA took over five to seven years for us to get it back from that, so we needed that line of credit to hold us over, so we, for obvious reasons, we have a tremendous cash flow problem. And FEMA is not, doesn't reimburse like right the next day, whereas the, uh, line of credit is available within 24 hours, you know, for us. The, uh, expiring line of credit cost $42,000 in 2018. The proposed one for tonight is at 49 and 1/2 thousand. That's a $7,500 increase and we doubled the amount. Costs go up, five years later, price of money is up astronomically compared to that, so there's a lot of factors that are going into this tonight, and I'm pointing some of them out. The, the big thing that we had, uh, we need to remember is just, what was it, 200 and some odd days ago, Hurricane Ian devastated southwest Florida. If we were to get something like that, a category five coming through here with, uh, the rain and, and the whatnot, we could easily have a flood situation in all our homes that, you know, the magnitude would, would go way beyond what, what happened with Wilma. And so everybody kind of needs to, to remember that. If you want to see it, uh, I, I hate to promote this because it's on, it's on YouTube, uh, it's on YouTube and in Facebook, but, um, if you want to see the devastation of, that was created without, uh, without leaving your living room of Hurricane Ian, uh, just go on YouTube and type in Hurricane Ian and you'll get multiple.
Up to my house in North Fort Monmouth.
Yeah, you get multiple drone shots as of yesterday of just how much the devastation is, or just, the beach has been, the homes have been erased, I mean, they're just literally gone. So if something like that were to hit us, we would be very irresponsible of not being prepared for, with having, to have the necessary funds, you know, to, uh, to start rebuilding or cleaning up, so to speak. So, those are, those are just the facts that I wanted to bring up.
100%, absolutely.
I knew you had more stuff on that.
Absolutely, thanks for sharing, that's great information. Anyone else?
Just a quick comment, I mean, this is no different than a business.
Yeah.
With a business, you have a line of credit to smooth out what goes on in your business cycle. Sometimes you need cash, sometimes you have excess. This, this is how we deal with the same issue that any businessman does with their own.
Right, yeah. Yeah, Gary, you said, uh, said it better than I would have, but you, you covered a lot of the points that I did, that I was going to cover. I'll just, I'll just kind of summarize in closing this, that, you know, when, when a storm comes through, um, we've all seen what the devastation is, we've all seen how the roads are blocked and the trees are down and, um, the, the place looks like a disaster zone because it is one. Well, this is the money that it takes to clean up and get us back to where we can operate again. And, um, and it has to be done, and if the money's not there, um, we'll just won't even talk about that, because we don't want to go there. So, this is, this is, this is the prudent thing to do. The cost of it is minimal if we don't use it, and certainly the goal is never to use this, but when we need it, this is not an option, this is not a want, this is, we're going to need it. And, um, and it's critical, one of, obviously, the, the, the primary reason why a government exists is for the safety of the residents, and this is all about keeping our residents safe and protected, um, and back to normal as quickly as we can, so it's, uh, I'm, I, I'd like to just do a shout out to our finance group because they did an amazing job of pulling together a, a great deal, um, for minimum cost. And, um, so Emile, you and your staff, thank you for the work you did on this, excellent job. All right, is there any public comment on this item?
There sure is. I was, uh, looking at some FEMA stuff recently. Uh, have you ever considered reinsurance?
Jim, make your statement.
The reinsert, the reinsurance, uh, process, okay, is something you can consider. Has it been considered?
This is not about insurance.
Well, I said, reinsurance on the insurance you expect to receive from FEMA.
This is.
Without doing anything. Anyway, this is, be part of a cost benefit analysis that your new software you've got now probably would allow you to do, to where you can make these decisions pretty fast. But if you check with the FEMA regulations, you will find, and they actually implore you to use reinsurance. And all that does is additional layer of insurance, and probably you could get them to speed up the process, because they don't want to pay, and they're insurance guys. Insurance guys work back and forth between each other when it comes to claims. So just consider it and at least ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I have one quick question. In regards to when you make a draw on the line, in, in here it says it can, it's the mayor, the town administrator, or the financial town administrator. If there is a draw, does it need to come before the council? Because it says or. So that was my only question. If, does it have to come before council for, for a draw to be made on the line? Huh?
For authorization?
To make a draw, yeah, a draw on the line.
Okay, got it. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. I don't believe that, I believe that we are authorizing that draw tonight. I don't know, I could be wrong, but, uh...
The draw is authorized by the signature unauthorized.
Right.
On the town administrator and the town financial administrator. Pretty much the guidance today is just like operations as it happens now. Uh, when we need to proceed, uh, um, Andy and myself actually go in line and, and proceed with a draw. It's important to mention that this line of credit, it's only can be utilized for emergency. So it's not, um, anything that's going to be used for operations regarding.
Right, right. Yeah, so, I mean, just like when we sign checks or anything like that, we don't, as a council, we don't approve each one of those. We have, we approve the process that allows for that to happen. And, um, certainly, uh, and I don't have a problem saying this, because I know we've got folks that are highly reputable and, and would never do that, but if somebody were to ever misuse it in any way, obviously, uh, they would be shown the door very quickly.
In cuffs.
In cuffs, yeah.
In handcuffs.
But fortunately, we have a staff that is awesome and, and exceptional. All right, any other comments from the council? Seeing none, if we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Item number 10, please.
Item number 10 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with Sunup Enterprises, Inc. in the amount of $233,369.00 to complete the town hall parking lot drainage and resurfacing project. Approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2022-2023 town budget, authorizes the ma, the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any council comment on this item?
I can say that, um, going back to 2016, I, I was complaining about what I would call the extension of the C11 that was running around, running through the entranceway. It's, it's been a big issue, a concern of mine for, since like 2016.
Yeah, I just.
Since we acquired the building, it's been a concern.
It has, it has. I, I'd just like to commend the administration for having a flood this afternoon, so we could all see firsthand the need for it. That was, yeah, that was, that was impressive by administration, so, um, all right, is there any, uh, public comment on this item?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. I was looking at the numbers on here, and I'm a little confused. I know the amount is 233, 369. I know that you need to take 58,927 out of money, reserves to put forward. And I know that there's 95%, 90 by the feds and 5% by the, uh, state, 5% town share of 198,923.76. But for the life of me, no matter how I mesh the numbers together, back and forth, put them in a blender, pour them out, I can't get the $58,927. I would like someone that, and I got graduate degrees in mathematics. Gentlemen, I would like someone in English to tell me how they go from 233 with 196, $98,000 in grant money, to get 58,927 we have to take out of general funds, after we have spent already $14,535 for the engineering. So, please, educate me.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. You know, it's interesting, Noel, that he should bring that up, because when I read that, I actually had the exact same question. I meant to, uh, ask, ask Emile how that, how that all worked out, because I couldn't get the numbers to work either, so, so, uh, please, uh, enlighten Noel and enlighten your mayor as well, please.
Let me see if at the same time I can enlighten myself.
Okay.
Um, the way this, um, this happens, we, um, we had 198 FEMA money, of which, um, the federal, actually, the fed, the federal government was going to fund by 90%. Uh, there's 5% contribution from the town and another 5% from the state. We budgeted 180 rather than the full amount of 198. And this budgeted amount has been carrying forward for the last few years, up until we finally got this approved, um, by FEMA for us to utilize it. So, what we needed to do is to make up the difference of the 180, to increase it to the 198, and then in addition to that, the 5,000 that was never included. So, um, for, for me to show it to you, I would have to actually put up the numbers in a table for you to see where they come. Maybe by a simple explanation like I'm telling you, it might not make sense. But when we, when we went back to the 198, um, then you have to make that difference from the 233. But the 180 did not include about roughly, um, 12,000 to 13,000 dollars. So, even though we have the 180 versus, it's not just the difference, it's not just the difference between the 233 and the 198.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe what we can do, um, is, can you put together a, just a spreadsheet for that, and then, uh, and then we'll have that available, you know, mid, mid, mid next week somewhere, so that.
Absolutely, yes.
People can, can take a look at it, and you can send, send one to me, because I'd like to see it as well.
Yes, definitely.
We'll get that, Noel. All right, um, any other council comment on this item? Seeing none, if we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, uh, item number 11, please.
Item number 11 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending resolution 2023-045 to correct an ownership error within the water and sewer services agreement. Consent to the City of Cooper City providing water services to 12550 Luray Road, real property lying within the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing that no further expansion of service shall be permitted without the explicit written consent of the town. Providing for a certified copy of this resolution to be furnished to the City of Cooper City and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item?
This is the perfect choice nursery, right? Yeah, right.
Seeing none, is there any public discussion on this item?
Noel Hollingsworth, again, just a comment. This seems to be becoming a fairly common, uh, thing that happens. They come in, they get the approval for the water, and then they have to come back and change it. And it seems in the last year or so, it, they, it's becoming almost routine. And, because I know that this year, we've had three or four come back this way. I'd like to know what the problem is and how do we correct it, so it only comes before the council once.
Thank you, Noel. I don't know if you want to address that, Andy, or you want to take that back and some thought?
I'll just say, in this case.
Yeah.
When the applicant put the application through originally, she put it through in her name, and we processed it based on that. The, the property is, is now in a corporate name, and they wanted to reflect that. And so, when Cooper City came, when she changed that with Cooper City, Cooper City came back to us and said, will you guys sign off on this? And I said, I will if my council will.
Gotcha.
So, that's why it's back before you.
Right.
It's something we don't want to handle administratively if there, if there needs to be a correction.
Right.
Uh, we'll...
So, it wasn't something in our process or anything like that?
No, it was not. It was the applicant in Cooper City, actually.
Okay. All right.
So, but we could, we'll try to check those, be a little tighter with those in the future, so that they don't have to come back.
Okay. Perfect. All right.
Yeah, this is like really the first one I think we've had where it's come back.
Where it's come back.
Where it's come back because of, of a change.
We're seeing more and more of these come through, but I think this is the first one that's come back.
Right. The first one rebounded.
Right. Yep. All right. Very good. Uh, if we can please call the roll on this item.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Thank you all. Appreciate you coming out.